...plan that they came up with. I was part of the Teachers of the Year meeting in which I spoke with them and someone stood up and said, "Mr. Rogers, would you give up your tenure?" And I said, "Absolutely not." I remember in the early 1970s getting tenure for the first time. I don't know that many of you younger teachers out there really realize what kind of an issue that was at that particular time. I'm not condemning the school system. I'm not voting against the plan. I think we'll have to follow the plan. I'm voting against the law in the whole entire process. I do not believe that it's good legislation. And so in my, in my article, I said very bluntly, "I applaud the work of the Iredell-Statesville School Administration and the team of teachers from throughout the district who worked collaboratively to come up with a workable plan to address this horrible legislation. You worked as a team to develop a best-case solution to an impossible situation. Please do not be offended when I vote against, I do not vote in favor of this particular plan. My vote has nothing to do with the plan presented to us. My vote is not against teachers and students. Rather, it is a vote on behalf of each one of you." Now, we're gonna have to follow something whether we like it or not. All across the state of North Carolina, one school system has flatly rejected the idea of even coming up with the 25 percent. There are entire faculties that have voted throughout the state of North Carolina not to give up their tenure under any circumstances, and I want to impress upon all of you people sitting out there with those red shirts on that you do the very same thing. I guess what I'm asking is that I'm asking the other board members to join with me in voting against this particular, you're not, you're not voting against the plan, you're voting against the law. I find it totally unacceptable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments? Any other comments? I guess, Mr. Rogers, I'm a little bit confused because I think if we took a vote about whether we agree with the law or not that's been passed, it would be a unanimous vote against the law that was passed. But, as I understand your, your argument very well, and it's very well made about the argument against the law, but since we are faced with the law, and it's been my impression that this board and this system was prepared to obey the law, you know, we asked the administration to set up a group involving teachers to come up with how, what would be the best solution, as you said, to a very horrible law. But what's the, what's our best solution if we have to make this selection, at least to offer our teachers? Understanding that it is up to the individual teachers whether they accept the, the four-year contract versus giving up their tenure. I mean, that's an individual decision the teachers or individual faculties can make. But as I understand it, for us as a board and as a system to comply with that law, we have to have some process in place to offer for those teachers that may elect to accept a four-year contract. So if we, if we don't pass this selection process, then those teachers who would elect to accept a four-year contract thus giving up their tenure would not have an option. And then that would make us in an illegal situation because we have not made that offer. So, I mean, this is a selection process developed by teachers along with administrators. And so I guess I would put the question back to you if we, how are we gonna be compliant with the law if we don't have a process such as this? And if we don't agree with this one, again, as I said earlier, if we don't agree with what is presented to us, what would be our solution then to the problem?
I think we're gonna have to follow the plan that we've adopted, right, Dr. Lasain?
Well, we're asking for the adoption of that plan tonight.
I think we're gonna follow it whether we want to or not, but I'm still, I'm not going to sit here and vote in favor of something that I totally completely disagree with.
Well, I just wanna make sure we understand what it is we're voting on. I mean, we, or at least the other board members.
One particular school system has adopted four different plans that they will follow. But they're still overwhelmingly voting against the law as it is written. So I guess that's up to each individual system. I think we need to send a message that this is just unacceptable.
Well, the law is unacceptable, I think, to all of us. But I guess the question we have before us, the administration has presented to us a selection process on how to be compliant with the law, we have to vote that either up or down. And I'm sure they're gonna ask us if we vote the process down, then what would be our solution to the process question? You know, so it's gonna put the question back in our lap. And I'm not so sure we want to tell them, as much as we don't like the idea of having to have a selection process, that's the real dilemma. But if we do, in, in my mind at least, we would be better off supporting the teachers since that is the process they came up with. Does that make sense?
And Dr. Cash, if I could add, this is a very difficult process for particularly those that were participants in the Teacher of the Year forum. You know, you could just see the angst and the struggle in that process, understanding the legal requirement, but still just being very, very thoughtful through that process. And, you know, several representatives from that committee actually came and spoke to the Board of Education. And that was part of the addition of collaboration as a criteria. In addition to that, I don't think we've ever administered a survey from Human Resources that got as much response as the response we had on Senate Bill 402. In addition to the prescribed questions that were there, we also were able to get a lot of information. And then in the joy of my department having to go out and communicate this information, but the richness of the conversations with teachers through that process. We have outstanding teachers in this district. And we know that whatever we are challenged to do, we will do our best work at that. And in that work, we will celebrate the work of the teachers, we will celebrate that collaboration. We will do whatever we can to mitigate kind of the divisiveness that, that may be built into that law. So what we are asking for is, yes, a difficult vote on, you know, questionable legislation. But we do have to be able to abide by some timelines that we've shared with you and to be able to prepare for what we have to do in preparation for July 1st, 2014.
Dr. Lasain, you said 266 are eligible for the four-year contract. What happens if a large majority refuse that? Are you, would you even have enough people to fill the 25 percent?
We, our obligation as part of the law is to offer to our eligibility pool. So if we advance through our entire eligibility pool and we still don't have 266, we have met our requirement of the law. There is nothing in the law that says that 266 have to accept.
Thank you.
Well, we're, we're doing the same thing again, what we do in a lot of cases. We're talking about apples and oranges. We can vote 21 to nothing four times, you know, vote soon, vote often, not to accept the law that comes out of North Carolina. But that law's been passed. Now, I've asked the question down there, are you sure that the people that voted for that law are from North Carolina? I didn't get an answer on that, but I did answer, ask the question. I'm not, I don't know where they came from. But that's the law as it is. As you're saying, we're trying to come up with a process at this time to present this. Law's passed, we present the process, and we've got some people who say they're not going to accept that. If enough people don't accept it, then we don't do it. We've got another, I think, cat in a hat at this particular time, if you wanna call it that, is that we have somebody down there talking about a 3 percent raise. Well, now, our politicians have never lied to us, so sometimes they've been a little off of the truth. But if that's the case, and that comes through, then where is this gonna stand in reference to the law? If you've accepted that, do you get that plus the 3 percent? We're all hoping that they wake up and take this law off the books before we have to enforce it. But that's not likely. So what we're doing now is that we're trying to establish a method to utilize it in case it's still there. And with all the parts and pieces, and we've used our Teachers of the Year, we've used accountable people to come up with this process. And so, you know, but I understand, Mr. Rogers, tenure is something that's extremely valuable. I'm hoping they wake up and that they come back and correct all of these misfortunate things. But at this time, we are dealing with the process to choose that 25 percent.
Yes, and Mr. Kelly, I would add to that, and with this goes extreme thanks to the Teachers of the Year, Jed Stuss, as well as Ethan Todd, who helped with these presentations all across the school district. The unknowns of Senate Bill 402 are number one, there's no guarantee for funding beyond next fiscal year. I mentioned that earlier. But on top of that, there is no guarantee for what will happen July 1st, 2018. Those individuals who are offered and accept a four-year contract, we don't know if their salary will remain come July 1st, 2018 and beyond. The way the legislation is currently written, the interpretation is that it will be money on top of any additional raises during that time period, this four-year window of Phase Two. But there, we don't know anything about funding for salaries July 1st, 2018 and beyond.
True.
There's nothing explicitly written.
There's nothing there for the 3 percent yet. There's nothing there for past the first level of, of the 525 percent. There's nothing there. So we're talking about a process to be placed in action at this time that we'll follow if we have to, knowing that we're gonna present it to a lot of teachers that are gonna turn it down in reference to the, the way it's stated at this time.
The other thing is, we are looking at the timeline for the process. When the General Assembly comes back in May, you have to realize that that's gonna be very late in the process. I know there had been some conversations about adjustments to this law, but in the meantime, we have to have a plan in place because May would be too late for us to start this process, to be able to get contracts offered by June 30th, 2014, especially based on if our employees stick with what they've said in the survey. That offering process will take a long time because we will have virtually half that we know of that plan not to accept.
Well, we've played the game of, we hope that the legislature will do so-and-so before we have to act on it. And we've been backed into a wall several times there, and this is not something we wanna wait for. So we put this in place, see if it works, and hope we don't have to use it. If we do, hopefully it's a short-term thing. That's, I think, where we are.
Mr. Chairman, the gentleman to my immediate right, Mr. Rogers, I have a great deal of respect for. We don't always agree, obviously, but he makes a very compelling argument and wrote an excellent piece and it's published in the paper Sunday. But like Mr. Kelly said, the bottom line is, the law is the law. Now, there are a lot of laws I don't agree with. There's several I could name. But we have to follow the law. So I move that we accept the recommendation from administration to implement the four-year contract selection process.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
All right. Motion carries five, one. Thank you. Next, we have second readings of several policies, items C, D, E, F, and G. Dr. Lasain, since you're standing there, are you in place for Dr. Hargrave?
I'm obviously not Dr. Hargrave. And I don't think there's any questions about our policies here, but you have a number of policies that are being presented for second reading and therefore requiring a vote. Are there any questions regarding items C through G?
Again, we did discuss these at length last month during the first reading. We discussed again last week in the Committee of the Whole. So if there are any other questions that have come up since last week, please ask Dr. Lasain now. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve second reading on items C through G.
Second.
If a motion and a second, any further discussion? So all those in favor of the approval of these policies, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
We now come to our time for public comment. We have several people who signed up tonight to speak to us on several topics. We have topics ranging from the computer purchase of the MacBooks to the Making Proud Choices, to bullying policies. So I will call these names in order that the people signed for here and ask you to come to the speaker stand and, again, say your name and the topic that you plan to speak about. And then I will remind you all that each speaker will have three minutes to present their statements to us. Again, as a board, we tend not to respond back to you tonight. This is your time to speak to us, and we will take your comments under consideration as we do the work of the board. So out of, out of respect for the other speakers, because we have a, a full page of speakers tonight, I will ask everyone stick to their three-minute time limit. And I'll ask Kelly if she will make sure that we set the clocks and the timer as you start speaking. And we'll ask that you respectfully stop speaking when the time's up. So we'll ask first is Candace Roseborough. Okay, we'll move on then to Amanda Gilreth.
Hi. My name is Amanda, and I'm a Making Proud Choices facilitator, concerned parent and grandparent. My concern is that our children need to be taught to protect themselves. You can walk around high school campus and see that they are gonna learn some things on their own, if not taught. The Making Proud Choices curriculum teaches just that. Yes, children are gonna have children, and us as parents are devastated at first, but we deal with it. We love our babies. I know, I've become a grandparent when my child at 15 become a parent. My grandchild is now 15. She has a lot of dreams and goals, but at 15, my child had to give up their dream of becoming a doctor and then had to go to work at Village Inn Pizza to help raise the baby. When our children become parents, their chances of living in poverty and living off our welfare system are, in some cases, all they know how to do. Let's teach our children how to have better lives for themselves. My concern is not that the babies that we can't help but learn, but it's the STDs that concern me more. This program teaches our children to be more aware. They learn that there are STDs you can have and not be able to get rid of without treatment, and there are STDs with long-term consequences, and yes, they learn that AIDS can kill you. Yes, I am concerned that our children learn how to protect themselves. A baby we love, but I can't see anyone loving the fact that their child may die from AIDS. I know that as a community, we would like to think that the parents are gonna teach their children the facts of life. But the fact is that kids are gonna think they know more than the parents. That is why we need to teach our children how to teach their children the true facts of life. Again, I had to learn the hard way when my 15-year-old become a parent. I am lucky that my child didn't have to deal with STDs, but are we gonna take that chance with our children? Just how much do we love our children? We don't have to teach foreplay, they're already learning that. So do we not want to teach our children the right way to protect themselves? The program does teach that abstinence is the best way to protect you, but it also teaches the kids what to do if they're in a situation that they have to make a decision. The program teaches scenarios that help them think about what they would do before it happens. This Making Proud Choices teaches them to stop and think before making a life-changing situation. The kids are also taught how drugs and alcohol can affect your decision. Let's look at this program as being a great way to save our kids' lives. No, we're not gonna be able to save everyone, but can we not be proud of saving as many of our children as we can? I wish that my children had been able to take this class. My situation turned out with my beautiful grandchild and success of my child, but again, what if I had to deal with the death because of an STD? Please think more about the safety of our children versus the thought that the program is teaching foreplay, because, again, look in the halls of schools from middle to high school, they are teaching themselves. Take it from a parent and grandparent who learned from experience that a child can sit on the front row of church when hormones rage, they need to be taught what to do if they're confronted with sex. In the end result, it does not matter how many times abstinence, foreplay, condoms, or sexual language are mentioned, it's what they learn about protecting and caring about themselves that counts. Please take this program seriously and let's try to change our, try to save our kids' lives. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Tim Snyder. And next is Susan Johnson.
My name is Susan Johnson, and I'm a school nurse with the ISS District, and I'm here tonight on behalf of all the school nurses. I don't think the public, and I don't think the board really realizes what goes on behind the closed doors of the nurses' office, the counselors' offices, and the SAP offices, and the things that we see and hear. I'm gonna give you some, some data that I have collected. It's unofficial data, but I, I called around to all the nurses. I got feedback from all the nurses, and I want you to be informed. Like I said, I'm here on behalf of all the nurses. There's 18 of us with the district, and between all of us, we have 34 children, and three of the nurses are grandmothers, and they have 10 grandchildren between them. So we know a little bit about kids. First and foremost, I wanna make it abundantly clear that we believe in abstinence, and we believe in monogamy. And we have all raised our own children that way, and we preach that every day. It's the first thing that we say to them when they come in to ask us about sex with all their questions, and it's the last thing they hear when they walk out of my office. And that is definitely what I believe, and that's what all 18 of us believe. However, due to the prevalence of teen sexual activity, teen pregnancy, and STD rates, we believe in educating our teens on how to make safe choices. I was curious, is this a district-wide problem or an isolated, is it isolated to pockets of our, our, our district? So I sent out emails to all the nurses, and I said, "So what's going on in your school? What are you hearing in the last year? How many pregnancies have you dealt with?" Statesville High School, which was my school until recently, had the higher number of pregnancies, which a lot of people say, "Well, I expected that." A lot of people think that. However, North Iredell came in a very close second. South Iredell came in right behind. West Iredell came in right behind South. Two babies were born in middle school. Of the pregnancies, the 38 pregnancies that I learned about, and these are the ones that we know about, there's a lot more out there that we don't know about that end before they give birth. They either end in miscarriage, some have ended in elected abortion, and some have ended in live births. Teen pregnancies, if you don't already know this, a lot of times, they go into preterm labor and they're low birth, they give birth to low birth weight babies due to lack of prenatal care. I wish I had all night to tell you stories that would curl your toes about the things that have come through my office. Incidentally, our schools are filled with children born to teen moms who were young and had little or no prenatal care. Those children struggle daily developmentally, behaviorally, and academically, and the school system pays the price for that. I know my time is up. Can I have one more sentence? A long one, please? These are things I really want you to know. Statistically, we had 989 students who approached school nurses last school year about reproductive health issues, including pregnancy scares, pregnancy prevention, condom use, and STD scares. Other than abstinence is the only way to protect themselves against pregnancy and STDs. And this is why we feel condom demonstrations are so important. Again, we believe in abstinence. However, it's not always happening. In conclusion, many of our school nurses have been trained to teach part curriculum classes and have done so after school and on weekends. Some of us have children who have taken the classes. We believe in abstinence, we believe in monogamy, but we also want the teens of ISS to navigate the path through high school without becoming a parent or contracting an STD. So with this, I appeal to ISS Board and the community to help us educate our youth and keep them safe.
Next speaker is Alyssa Johnson.
My name is Alyssa Johnson, and I'm a junior in the IB program at South Iredell High School. I'm here on behalf of the Park students in Iredell County. Even though many of them could not be here tonight, I have a petition with 63 signatures stating that they agree to the Park class being taught in the ninth grade health curriculum. This includes students, employees, and parents of the ISS District. Now, I know what you're thinking, what is a teenage girl doing talking about such an edgy subject? I am here to give you all an account from my perspective, a student who watched myself and others grow from this incredible program. On the day I took the class, I noticed that many students walked in with their hoods up, ready to get the day over with and leave. However, as the day progressed, I began to notice a significant change in this behavior. Students were becoming involved, enjoying the class, and participating every chance they got. It is very difficult to explain the amazing impact that occurred that day. I almost find the class comical because it's like a parent sneaking vegetables into their children's food. We are providing the students with what they need, but not being direct or awkward about it. This class teaches abstinence, but also teaches safety if a decision is made to have sex. Of course, I believe that abstinence is the best choice, but the many teens who do not choose this path should be educated on how to prevent a life-changing mistake. I know many of you are concerned about teaching young teens about this mature subject. However, I believe that we must not forget that many teens are already learning about it in immature ways. When I was in the sixth grade, I learned a large amount of information about sex from the school bus because many boys constantly talked about things they had seen on the internet or on TV. This simply cannot be stopped. It is imperative that we remember that no matter what, teens are going to talk to each other. So why not provide them with the correct information in a professional environment so that their talk is executed in a more mature and correct manner? As I spoke to my peers around my school about the Park program after this class, I realized that many students are not correctly informed about sex. Many only consider pregnancy, not the risk of STDs. Others think that pregnancy nor STDs could, could ever happen to them. Students are oblivious. The current health curriculum is clearly not working. As the adults leading the students of Iredell County, I believe that it is your duty to take a stand and inform these students how to be safe and make smart decisions and proud choices. I encourage you to take the initiative and recognize the strong impact this class will have on the teens of Iredell County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Pat Baker.
My name is Pat Baker, and I'm here to support safe schools for LGBT students. I'm currently president of the Cornelius Lake Norman Chapter of PFLAG, Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays. We meet in Davidson, and we're the closest chapter to your... We meet in Davidson, and we're the closest chapter to your school system. Therefore, we have several families who live in Iredell who are coming to our meetings. I'm here tonight as a mom. My experience and the many stories I've heard at PFLAG reveal that the first reaction many parents have when they hear, "Mom, Dad, I'm gay," is fear. We're afraid for our children. We're afraid others will hurt them. And statistics posted currently on the PFLAG org website bear that out. We all remember being in middle school or high school, and we remember what happened to the child who didn't fit in, the one who was different. This is why the Safe Schools program is so vitally important. I want to thank you for your board's focus in your mission statement on providing leadership to enable all students to achieve their academic potential and lead productive and rewarding lives. We know that the teachers, counselors, and principals in Iredell Statesville schools are working to keep the children safe, and we're grateful for this. We hope these efforts can be as visible as possible so that the LGBT children will feel safe and included. We're living in a time of rapid social change, and we know it's stressful for many families. We're on a journey together, learning and growing, and most important, caring for the children, all of the children. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mac Murray.
Good evening. My name is Mac Murray, and just have a couple of things to say. Hopefully, I'll be done within three minutes. Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, and Board, thank you for letting me come tonight. After hearing earlier stuff about the task force, I guess the wind in my sails are pretty much gone, but I do think it's important, as a parent, to at least let you know how some of us, maybe most of us, I don't know, how we feel about the Making Proud Choices curriculum. I addressed you all in December after reading an article in the newspaper. My boys have gone through the school system. I'm very much aware of the sex education classes. I've got a junior at high school right now, Statesville. But my, I guess a knee-jerk reaction was to come and speak on behalf of how I don't think this curriculum was going to be positive, based on what was in the article. Since that time, I have had a chance to review the curriculum. I hope all of you had done that as well. We all want our children to be successful. We all want our children to make excellent scores. Excellent scores are As. If I can draw a relative example. When you go out to eat at a restaurant and you see a sanitation grade of B, you probably don't go there. We all want to go to an A restaurant, ninety or above. One thing that to not mention tonight is in the curriculum of Making Proud Choices, condom usage, eighty-four to eighty-nine percent effective. That's a B. This is the best curriculum we have, and that's the only thing, the best we can do is a B? Our students deserve better than that. I do applaud and commend you all for passing this task force resolution. I think that's a good step, but we can do better than the program that is currently optional. I think we need to look at that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Lynette Saxton. Next speaker is Kristy Boring. Oh, Lynette, is that her?
Thank you for letting me come and share tonight. My name is Lynette Saxton, and I am the parent of a student in the Mountmore IB School. I came here tonight because I would like to thank Brady Johnson for making the decision this past week to remove the glistened posters and decals from the Iredell Statesville schools, and for making the decision not to align our school district with an organization with a political agenda such as this. I'd like to read the poster to you. The poster states, "This is a safe and inclusive space for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students and their allies." The North Carolina anti-bullying laws clearly include all students. So there is really no need to establish a safe space for any particular group or singling them out for special attention to the exclusion of others. So I want to thank you once again for doing the right thing, and I appreciate your time.
Next speaker then is Kristy Boring.
Good evening, Board members. We all know I'm here to speak about Making Proud Choices, but I'll just let you be known, let be known again, Mr. Kelly, you threw a wrench in my plans. So I go try and keep this under three minutes, but you threw a wrench at me. First, I want to make known that I am not here saying that sex education is a bad thing. I never opted my nineteen-year-old son out of any current sex ed class in Iredell County schools. I know the law. I have it printed. And the law clearly states that it is to be an abstinence-based program, an abstinence-centered program. The law also states that the Board, students may receive information about where to obtain contraceptions and abortion referral services only in accordance with the local Board's policy regarding parental consent. We currently follow the law. Making Proud Choices is not an appropriate curriculum. I agree with a lady who was up here earlier. Yes, let's do teach our children to have better lives for themselves, but not by teaching them sexual foreplay, not by showing them how to put on condoms on a boy, a girl's how to put on condoms on a boy, not by teaching them mutual masturbation. And I apologize if there are kids left in this room, but I am furious at this point. I'm pretty sure that you can tell that. North Carolina State Sanders also says it's to be an age-appropriate curriculum. What, what about Making Proud Choices is age-appropriate? I have read it. It is not age-appropriate. I have printed off seventeen studies, and I do not have time, of course, to go through each and every one of them. I can give you the website that I got them from about abstinence-centered programs and how they work. And they're not abstinence-only curriculums. And abstinence-only is a tag that groups that are opposed to the abstinence curriculum are putting on these curriculums. It's actually, they're actually entitled Sexual Risk Avoidance: Abstinence Education. It's not considered abstinence-only. I also want to point out that there is, where is my paper here? A study at the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Review of Comprehensive Sex Education Curricula, available at, and I know you don't have time to write this down, because I've got to say it quickly, www.ac.hac.gov/programs/FSB/content/abstinence. Gives you a whole bunch of numbers that I don't have time to read. But it is a study of ineffective outcomes. According to a recent report on comprehensive sex education conducted by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, there is little evidence that comprehensive sex programs actually delay the onset of sexual activity. In fact, the majority of programs indicated no delay whatsoever. A summary of their meta-analysis of evaluation studies is provided below. It is on the, I found it on the U.S. Department, where did I find it? U.S. Department of Health and Human Services website. So I know that you can find it, too. It's not hard to find, along with these seventeen other studies about the sexual risk avoidance abstinence education. The one last thing I want to say that I did not have planned. Mr. Kelly, you know I have a lot of respect for you. And what you said, I believe that you just spoke my argument for me in a different way, because that, what you said is why we need to be teaching abstinence to our kids. Let me give you a true story, and I know my time is up, and I do apologize greatly.
Ms. Boring, I know you spoke.
It's very short. And a couple other people went over. It's very short.
Well, okay.
I promise, Dr. Cash.
We want to respect everyone else who would like to have more time as well.
A nineteen-year-old girl had a child out of wedlock. That nineteen-year-old girl was me. I loved my son. He was not a mistake. But that is why I teach my children abstinence, because I can reflect back, like Mr. Kelly said. I know how hard it has been. I know firsthand experience. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ronnie Wooton.
Chairman Cash, Superintendent Johnson, and Board members, I want to thank you for taking time collectively as a board over the past three months, and individually also to talk with me about Making Proud Choices. I've expressed interest in serving on the task force, if you guys so see fit, and I'll be willing to do that. I also went and reviewed our current health program at one of our high schools, and I have an appointment to review the second one. And what I found was a very good curriculum, but I didn't realize, and I wouldn't have done this after the Cal meeting, because I didn't realize the teachers were responsible for developing their own curriculum, but the one that I looked at was very good. And I have no reason to believe the second one that I look at won't be just as well. Our teachers do a tremendous job, and that was evident in the material that I seen there. So with that in mind, I've also reviewed the Making Proud Choices curriculum, and although I have some concerns still about some areas of it, I've also had some concerns about the task force, the formation of it, and how it would be developed, and who would serve, and so on, but knowing that Piedmont Mediation will be a part of that, I'm much more comfortable with that tonight. And going forward, I just want to make sure that we set some clear objectives for the task force, and that we have some people on there that, serving, that'll come to the table with an open and objective mind to find a suitable resolution for the issue that we have. But thank you again for your time.
Next speaker is Shanna Whitley.
Good evening. I'm a Making Proud Choice facilitator at Lake Norman High School, a fifteen-year veteran of ISS Teaching Health. I'm also nationally board certified, was chosen as the North Carolina Health Educator of the Year in two thousand and nine, and was part of the committee that actually wrote our standards for North Carolina today. But most importantly, I have two students that are in this system. In a perfect world, I wish that all students would choose abstinence, but my children are growing up in a sexualized society, from the music they listen to, to the television shows and movies that they watch, or the video games they play. As a concerned parent, I refuse to put my head in the sand and believe if I tell them loud enough, long enough, they won't do it. We know teenagers are not going to do that. A lack of knowledge is dangerous. Having correct information to make informed decisions is what I hope will protect my child from teen pregnancy and STDs. Comprehensive sexuality education is the law, and it's making a difference in how students make decisions. I've seen this curriculum empower students with knowledge and skills to make informed decisions, whether it's to choose abstinence, get birth control, or use condoms. As an educator and a parent, I believe knowledge is power. I believe by sending my children to the school system, they are empowered and enriched due to the high quality of information and instruction they receive in the classroom. Making Proud Choices embodies ISS's vision to ignite a passion for learning and our values of being student-focused, using data, and using those results. Making Proud Choices allows students to practice communication skills that deal with real-life pressure situations. My previous Making Proud Choice students have told me that the skip portion of the curriculum has given them the voice and confidence to tell a partner no, or to change current risky behaviors to safer options. ISS is an education system where decisions are based on data. Well, there may be a few vocally opposed to implementing this curriculum, but there are far more that agree and are silent. I have taught three hundred and one students for Making Proud Choices over the last three years. I've had two parents decline, and yes, I was very adamant that there is a condom demonstration, that we are a judgment-free, information-free area. Most parents are very thankful that the children are receiving comprehensive sexuality education because they are too embarrassed to talk to their children. At Lake Norman High School, we have a waiting list at all times of thirty-plus students hoping to get into the next class. And lastly, fifty-two percent of our students anonymously report that they are less likely to engage in sexual intercourse in the next year after taking this class. Why is this so important? The North Carolina Youth Risk Behavior Survey has consistently shown, and I only went back to two thousand and five, I didn't have time to go back further than that, out of a class of thirty, half of the students have been sexually active. That's in North Carolina. That's us. This data has remained consistent over the last almost decade. Imagine the effect that we could have if we reached all the freshmen, and half of those children would decide not to have sex in the next year. It has been suggested that we should keep the sexuality education curriculum we have now. Mr. Wooton, you looked at North Iredell, that was mine. Thank you. My answer to that is presently, we do not have a sexuality education curriculum. We have standards that we came up with, but each teacher can teach whatever they want, however they want to. Each lesson aligns to the current North Carolina Health Education standards in Making Proud Choices. Until two thousand and nine, only abstinence was taught. At this time, North Carolina was the ninth-leading state in teen pregnancy. In two thousand and nine, the Healthy Youth Act, which was comprehensive, was passed. The latest information, North Carolina is now nineteen. Something is having an effect. But regardless of religious beliefs between the people that are in here, my child has the right to this information. And if you, as a parent, determine that your child does not need it, North Carolina gives you the right to opt out. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brika Sweet.
Hi, I'm Brika Sweet. I'm here to speak about Making Proud Choices. I apologize for not being here sooner in this decision-making process. I apologize for not being here sooner in this decision-making process. My husband is a retired Army Colonel and a combat vet of one war and four armed interventions. He has started a battle that he is going to lose and started chemotherapy in December for inoperable stage-four lung cancer. His chemotherapy is on Monday, and I would have been here sooner except for that. I've worked with programs serving high-risk students, those who are typically living in poverty, ever since leaving the Army myself in 1995 proudly as an Army Lieutenant Colonel. Many of the parents and grandparents of the kids that I serve are unlikely to ever come forward to speak at a board meeting, at a body of elected officials. And I hope that I, in some small part, can be here on the behalf of those parents, those grandparents, and those high-risk youth, most of whom have the highest needs for evidence-based programs, research-proven programs like Making Proud Choices. Literally hundreds of the middle graders enrolled in our after-school and summer enrichment programs have participated in Making Proud Choices since the pilot of it here in 2010. We have not had one single parent or grandparent or custodial complaint. Our middle graders have benefited from this program, and I know that because mothers, grandmothers, and custodial parents have thanked me profusely for the opportunity for their children to get the facts. One mom told me that she knew the facts and she could share them with her son, but he would never listen to her talk about these things. Another grandmother told me in tears that she was so grateful that her granddaughter, whom she is parenting, has the chance to get these facts because she is a fourth-generation child of a teen parent, and she wants that to stop with her child. An article on the ISS website right now talks about counselors getting coats and warm clothing and food for children in the winter and on snow days. It includes this quote, "We want our students to know that we've got their back. We love every one of them." Surely, it would be wonderful if all of these parents could provide coats and warm clothes for their kids, could provide food for their kids every day, and could speak with their children about the facts that will save their children's lives. That just doesn't happen. We're not complaining about schools helping children get food or warm clothing. Let's not complain about the schools helping them get factual, research-based, proven, effective programs that can save their lives. All of our children need to have evidence-based, researched-proven programs that prevent teen pregnancy and killer STDs. ISS already has the curricular material for just such a proven program, Making Proud Choices. And the grant can provide the training that our educators need to provide this in a standard way across our schools. Let's please use what we already know works well to save our children's lives and to save our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our list of speakers who signed up. I'll ask before we close if we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the board. Okay? I'll take one at a time here. We'll just sort of go from the front toward the back. Again, for those who came in late, just as a reminder, please state your name, the subject you're talking about, and try to limit your comments to three minutes out of respect for everyone else.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Keisha Russell. And I'm to Dr. Cash, Dr. Johnson, and the board. I just want to, I'm here on behalf of Making Proud Choices. I'm going to be real brief. My daughter did attend the program, and my son is currently enrolled in the program. And I must say that I am of the Christian faith, and I do teach them abstinence and godly morals in my home. But the truth of the matter is, is that the reality of it, that with everything, the social media, the exposure that kids get, not only through the internet, but through friends, through on the bus. Me and my daughter had the first conversation about sex when she was in the third grade, simply because of another student who wasn't raised the way that I was raising my children and had been exposed to some things that in fact exposed my daughter to some things, which was totally the wrong information. The only thing that I disagree with is that I feel like this program should probably start a lot earlier than the ninth grade in some middle schools because they're getting it one way or the other, and the fact is that they're getting the wrong information. So with my daughter going through it, some of the things that I didn't even consider talking to her about was brought to her attention. So therefore, she came home and was able to open up to me about, and it helped us to form a dialogue and us to be able to communicate freely about, you know, the sex and the STDs and pregnancies. Not only to mention that, but as a young lady and as a child, even though young people think that they are mature and they're grown, the fact of the matter is sex will in fact cause an emotional attachment that young women are not ready for, which causes them a lot of times to go on a downward spiral because they're not ready for that adult decision. And in the program, I know that it also teaches them, that's one of the reasons why they should not be sexually active at such an early age. So I just wanted to come and say thanks for the people that had put together the program because the reality of it is, is that we're dealing with real issues, real life. Our kids are getting exposed to it one way or the other. And so I am greatly appreciative to them getting the right information on it. And, you know, just listening to, I would call him my brother, talk about the word, you know, the people do perish for the lack of knowledge. And if they're not getting the proper information, then there is no way that they can make the right choice. So I just thank you for hearing me tonight.
Just to make sure, hold just a second, please. Just to make sure that I don't overlook anyone else that would like to speak. Let's take this kind of in order. I want to go from, anybody else on the front row? And then I'll move on to the second row. Anyone there who would like to speak? Third row? Fourth row? Dr. Corsi.
Good evening. My name's Steve Corsi. For over twenty-five years now, I've been the medical director of the prenatal clinic at our health department in Iredell County. As such, I come to you, I guess, from the front line because I'm delivering pregnant teenagers every week. I'm sure you're aware of the huge cost that this entails, not just for the taxpayers, but the human cost. Because for many people, this is the first step of a road that is very hard for them to deal with and has lifelong consequences. And as some people have alluded to, when you're dealing with sexually transmitted diseases, sometimes it's something which will lead to your death as well. I think you guys know that the United States has one of the highest incidence of teenage pregnancy in the industrialized world. North Carolina is the top tier of the states for teenage pregnancy. And Iredell County, until recently, has been way up there, too. When I saw the PARC data, and particularly the fact that our rates have fallen twenty-five percent since PARC began educating our students, I was very impressed. Now, I can understand some controversy around this subject. I can remember when I was ten years old, people were talking about whether or not we should have sex education in schools. Okay, it's half a century. We're still having this debate today. But clearly, something needs to be done to help these young people. Now, I could understand controversy if this was some kind of mandatory thing, but we do live in a free country. And any parent who objects to what this task force comes up with still has the option of taking their children, excluding them from the program. So I really don't see why this has to be such a bone of contention. We need to get this done for our kids. We need to stop letting the tail wag the dog and make this happen for our young people and their future. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else in the fourth row? Fifth row? And honestly, I cannot see to count the rows on back. We'll just say the next row. The last, okay, yes.
My name is David Holcomb. I'd like to comment on the Making Proud Choices. I think there's three things that everyone in this room could agree on. Number one, that abstinence is the only guaranteed way to prevent pregnancies, diseases, or any other emotional issues related to sexual activity. It's the only way. Number two, that is everyone going to follow the abstinence? No, they're not. Number three, do those who do not follow abstinence need to be educated? Yes, they do. However, I want to put two words before you. Perception and reality. This program, right off the bat, the perception of it is demented by its title, Making Proud Choices. There is no such thing as Making Proud Choices, multiple, plural, when it comes to sex education. There's only one proud choice. That's abstinence. If we make it plural, we're deceiving the people who are hearing it. So that alone, you don't need to go any deeper into the curriculum. It's already deceptive. It's putting something in the child's mind that doesn't need to be there. I tell you that because what this curriculum says is Making Proud Choices is the furthest thing from the truth. And I tell you that because I have experienced that. I made a proud choice till I was twenty-one years old. I started making bad choices after I was twenty-one years old, and those are the same bad choices that this curriculum calls proud choices. They are not proud. The only one to do is abstinence. Thank you.
Again, there's glare here on our faces, but is there any, anybody else in that row? In the next row? Following row? Yes.
Hello, my name is Tamika Smire. And I am a parent of five. I'm speaking for Making Proud Choices because I wish I would have had that chance to, you know, somebody to pat me on the shoulder and say, "This is a class you can take to make better choices in life." Because my mother was never home. My mother was never there to tell me, you know, "You're not supposed to have sex." I have a brother that's twenty-seven years old that has HIV. Nobody was there to tell him. How could I teach him when nobody told me? I have five kids of my own. My daughter took the first class, the first class, and she educated her sisters and her brothers. But how can a girl teach a boy? I just got married. I just got married December twenty-first. And if my husband never had a father to teach him, how can he teach my son? My son's father is not around. It's teachers that's there, nurses that's there that always, never had a problem with listening to a child because I had three in the program. I had one daughter that was raped. And she gave my daughter, she loved her, she treated her just like she was hers. That's the kind of people that you want around. You don't want to not have this class, therefore your child don't have nobody to go talk to when you're not around. I was a nurse working twelve hours. I was a single parent, so therefore my child couldn't come to me, and she's disabled. So when she got the trust of this teacher, she opened up to her. It's nothing like this class. So I would ask y'all just to please keep it, keep it going for the next generation. You never know what will happen. You might get that chance to just, you go in a class and sit and just listen. Maybe you go in and teach a class and just see how much feedback you get off of it. There's nothing wrong with it. Because I didn't get it. I can't speak for nobody else in here, but I know it was a great thing for my kids to get it, for her to teach it to her sister. So my other daughter took it, so she talked to her other sister. Now, they can't teach it to my son. My husband can't teach it because he really don't even know. I really want y'all to keep it, and thank you for listening to me.
Good evening. My name is Doug Holland. I do have a daughter in middle school and a son in high school, and I am here to speak on Making Proud Choices. As I spoke to you before in the last meeting, I do disagree with this program. I attended, recently I attended your committee, the whole meeting, and it concerns me that during that meeting, it was brought out that all of our schools are not teaching the same curriculum as far as sex ed goes. It's left up to the teacher. With all the technology we have in our school system today, it really concerns me that we're not teaching the same thing to all of our students. I agree, this program will do that. But there are other programs in our county that are very, very successful. Ms. Rogers touts that the pregnancy rate has dropped thirty-seven percent in this county. And that is good. But that is not indicative of Making Proud Choices. It's only taught to a portion of the students. There are other, many other programs that are working. One of those programs is Choosing the Best. It is currently being taught in our school system, and it is a very, very good program that teaches abstinence. It is an abstinence-based program. And unlike Making Proud Choices, students aren't paid to do those in-of-course surveys. The in-of-course surveys on Choosing the Best program are just as positive. It is making an impact on the pregnancy rates also, and they're not paid to fill those out. I would point out that at North Middle, we have the Truth Girls program, a very successful program operated by the Pregnancy Resource. Those students show up after school, parents bring them, pick them up. They're not paid to be there, and it is a very successful program. I think as a, as a board, we have to look at all those programs that are contributing to our pregnancy rate actually dropping in this county. You know, it's, to me, it's not, it's not a matter of, a teen pregnancy rate is awful. We don't want any teenager to get pregnant. And saying no is, is the right answer for that. Ms. Rogers herself, in a recent interview with WBTV, David Wisnig stated that the material is offensive to adults. It is offensive. It's offensive to me as a parent, and I think we need to do away with this program. There is a better program. And as Brian stated the Bible a while ago, lays it out pretty plain. It is one of abstinence. It is one that promotes sex under the guidelines of marriage between a man and a woman. And I think this board would be, would not be doing its duty if it didn't look at that. There is a better choice. And I think one other thing about the committee, appointing the, the committee to look into this, you're allowing Ms. Rogers to appoint that committee. That's not really fair to those of us who are against it. She's made it clear that she is for. It would be better for you, as a board, to appoint that committee to look into this and not those that are for it. Thank you for your time.
I want to make one response back. I think our vote tonight was to form a task force to look at that. We did not say anything about Ms. Rogers appointing that committee. So that's, that's still to be determined. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other speakers? If not, we thank you for your comments. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your concern. I'll ask Mr. Ray Johnson to go ahead and make his superintendent comments at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. You know, a wise man once said that confession is good for your soul, and so we've got a confession to make. Did you guys know that January was School Board Appreciation Month? We missed that. All the glamour and the, the high rate of pay that goes with these positions wears thin during debates like we've heard tonight, but we do appreciate your public service to the children and to the parents of this county. And as we stated earlier, we do have a school system that we're extremely proud of, and it has been recognized not only at the state level but nationally. Sometimes the staff and I, when we sit around, we, we talk about school business and we look at the future of, of public education because it has certainly been questioned in the last few years whether the public schools have outlived their usefulness. And, and we sometimes wonder, you know, what in the world, how did we get off track? Public schools now are producing the best results that they ever have in the history of public education, and it just, it just baffles me sometimes to, to question, why, why did we get off track? Why is public education under such close scrutiny now? Recently, I read a book, and the title of that book is Public Schools Cannot Do It Alone. And Jamie Volmer is the author of this. He is an attorney by profession and an entrepreneur that got into the ice cream business and made a lot of money selling ice cream. When he was running a business, he was asked by the governor of his state if he would serve on a committee, an education task force. And so he was not a real big fan of public schools, and so he jumped at the opportunity to serve on that task force. And he thought, "Boy, here's my opportunity. I'm gonna, I'm gonna straighten out these public schools." What he found out during his months and years of service was that the school business is very complex. He was speaking one day to a group of teachers, and he was, he was expressing his opinion that schools should be run like a business. And so the point that he made to the group of teachers that he was speaking to that day, there was a teacher in the audience that took exception with what he said, and so she went to the microphone and, and she began to question him about his business. And one of the, one of the highlights of his business was a particular brand of ice cream. It was made with blueberries, and, and he had been on Oprah, he had been on Good Morning America, giving away samples of this ice cream. And so this teacher, this veteran teacher, asked him, said, "Mr. Volmer, what, what would you do at your factory if the farmer delivered a shipment of blueberries and they did not meet your standard? They were defective blueberries?" And in the book, he makes the comments, "He could feel the trap snapping closed on him." Because the only answer that he could give back to that teacher was, "Well, Lord, I would have to send them back to the, to the farmer. I need blueberries that meet my standard." So the teacher then proceeded to lecture him that we in public education don't have that luxury, do we? We take every child, regardless of who their parents are, where they come from, what side of the track they're on, and we do our darn best to make sure that that child gets our best every single day. That was the beginning of the conversion of this gentleman, and he is now one of the chief proponents of public education. So, Board of Education, in honor of January being Board Appreciation, here's a copy of a book for you. Now, this means that you have a homework assignment. You gotta read the book, and what we'd like to do is challenge the community. We would like to do a community book study using this material. So we've got a lot of folks here tonight, and if you would be willing to join us in our book study, contact us. At the end of the discussion, we have invited Mr. Volmer to be here in our community in, in August, and he has agreed to come and talk to our community. And what, what we would like to do is, the administration of the school system is to commit to our community, to a new discussion about the purpose and the direction of public schools. Public schools are being asked to do more with less. They are being asked to prepare children for a day and age many of us will never see. They're being asked to prepare kids for jobs that have not even been invented yet. So the work that we have before us is formidable, and we admit to you that we cannot do it alone, but as we've seen here tonight, if we put our heads together and work together collaboratively, there's not many problems that we can't address. So we look forward to our book study, and we look forward to getting this gentleman in our community to kick off the 2014-15 school year, and we hope a lot of people will take us up on the offer to participate. Dr. Cash, I have one other thing, and it's a, it's a gentle reminder to make sure that you stop on the way home tonight and get your milk and bread. I understand it's about the snow, and you know what that means for the school system. That means we're gonna make some people very happy, and we're gonna make some people very upset with some weather calls over these next couple of days. Now, I hate snow, but I've got grandchildren, so I have started praying for snow, not, not because of the headache it causes me, but for my grandchildren. I've got a granddaughter who's never been on a sled before, and we want to get her on there. We have made some decisions, the Board has made some decision about our snow makeup days, and guys, we put our school calendars out a year ahead of time so that the community and our parents can make long-range plans. And so I just want to give a friendly reminder to everybody that we do have two snow makeup days thus far, and they are February the 17th and March the 28th. The Board of Education has also waived one day so far. Now, we're looking at two or three more possible days here just this week, and so things are gonna get real interesting now. One thing that we've heard from the community is, once you make that calendar, stick to it. So that's what we're planning to do, and I just want to remind everybody that our next snow makeup days are June the 12th and June the 13th. Now, we're probably gonna run out of snow days this year, and what that means is, we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions about possibly going to school on Saturdays or looking at some more waivers. But again, as a friendly reminder, we've got our calendar, and we've been reminded by our parents on multiple occasions, once you pass that calendar, stick to it so that we can, so that we can honor our long-term planning commitments, and we, and we certainly will do that. So that's our comments tonight. Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. Well, just to announce some future dates this month for significant days, Mr. Johnson mentioned part of it, but February 12th will be our Early Release Professional Development Day. February 17th will be a snow makeup day and mid-year review for the staff. February 25th will be a progress reports going home.
Do we have dates for our next month? For our meetings next month?
Dates for meetings next month? I don't have those right in front of me.
March 3rd is your count?
March 3rd will be the next committee of the whole.
It should be March, the 10th should be your next Board.
And March 10th will be our next Board meeting here. Forgot, do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, for personnel.
Okay, I asked for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss personnel issue. Someone please read that.
According to North Carolina...